Yeah, well, we could just cancel the meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Go next door. Okay. We're live. Okay, very good. Evening, everybody, and welcome to the August the 29th Town Council Informational Work Session. I'll begin by noting that the entire council and mayor are here. At this time, we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Let's begin with the wastewater treatment plant filter cover RFP. Holly's gonna initiate discussion.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So the town released an RFP for filter covers at the plant. This is a budget expenditure that will be shared among our partners. It's an advanced cover system that's designed to mitigate growth from algae. That is a requirement of the state. We do have our town engineer here for the first 30 minutes of the meeting this evening to answer questions, as well as Josh is joined from a conference virtually, Mayor.
Okay, so I think at this point, we're just gonna say if anybody has any questions that you can ask Josh. Not Josh, right, Wayne. Okay, so I'll start with Councilwoman Peggy and... Thank you. That helps. I wish everybody would do that.
Wayne, I could answer that probably. So we did post this on e Maryland Marketplace, and it was sent directly to just under 100 contractors that do this work. Also, the engineer firm that put together the specifications for us recommended to contractors that the RFP has been sent directly to. So we have not had the prebid, mandatory prebidding meeting yet, but at that point, we will know how many potential bidders.
Okay, thank you. All right. And then on the second page, just, I have a question. What are post tensioning cables? Wait, did you hear that? Okay, on the second page under 1,000.02, what is a post tensioning cable? Yeah, it says they have to look for them and draw pictures of where they are and where they're gonna stick their stuff so they don't run into each other. I was just curious what it was. Yeah, it's for informational.
Wayne, I can read you the sentence. It's from the specifications. It says, "The contractor shall prepare shop drawings showing all new anchor locations plus the existing post tensioning cables found."
Mary?
Just add to that, a post tensioning cable is intended to provide additional strength to the structure.
To sticks out of it?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, thanks. And on that paragraph, there's no need to say that it has to be reviewed by the town? Because it doesn't, it just says they have to provide it, but there's no statement saying it's gonna be reviewed by the town. I mean, I assume it's gonna be reviewed by the town, but there's nothing in it that says it will. Okay, I mean, it's just not mentioned on that line that they have to. Okay. Yeah, no, it makes sense. It just, I was wondering. And then on section 1,000, 1,004, under part C, it talked about if the owner is going to include costs because the contractor is working outside of normal hours. What cost would those be? I mean, like, just as, for instance, what kind of cost would come up by far us, considering them working overtime? Okay, so I'm on working hours in that section? Okay, the C part, it talks about costs included incurred by the owner in case they work overtime. It will, they will pay for that. So what cost would we incur when they work overtime?
I think, I believe, and Todd can correct me if I'm wrong, but this is saying the contractor absorbs those costs for...
Yeah, no, I was just wondering, what's the nature of those costs?
Generally, overtime. And that's where you see those, or additional materials that they may not have bid for, or something like that.
But that's their overtime, not our overtime. I mean, that's not our cost. But this is talking about our cost that they're paying, because it's by the owner.
Correct, and that's what's the cost there, or maybe deducted from the monies owed to the contractor. If indeed there are any, if there are indeed any monies possibly owed by the town, we're gonna deduct those costs, you know, to the contractor. But you're right, any overtime is gonna be their responsibility.
Well, I'm sorry. It says the costs that are incurred by the owner because they work overtime, the contractors will pay, which I'm all good with that. I'm just curious, what cost would we incur when they work overtime?
They should not.
Right, there could be potentially staff that has to
Hang about and see what they're doing.
Stay to monitor something that is being repaired or worked on. So I think that that is what that specifically is referring to, our cost to keep the facility running.
While they're there. All right, thank you, perfect. And then I just have one last one, I swear. This 1,000, under 1,005 use of premises, I'd suggest on 5A2 that we add in or use of facilities by owner. Because it says that it can't get in the way of anything except for like our use. Unless you're just assuming they won't get in the way of our use, that they have to clean up their stuff so it doesn't get in anybody's way, but we never talk about getting in the way of the use of the facility. So I, just a suggestion to add that in. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman?
No questions, thank you.
Councilman Morris? Peggy is there? Or Peggy just goes with, no more questions?
Yeah, thanks. Looks like the prebid is tomorrow. This is not a design build job, right? We've provided specifications for what we want? Are we planning on having bids in time for September council meeting? Any idea what the order of magnitude is for the cost? Do we have a guess? Not super important. Would be kinda nice to know what that is when we're lining up the bids. And I'd request, would be nice to be able to get bid results to review before next council meeting. So I don't have any other questions, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Councilman?
You know, I'm gonna steal some of the thunder from my colleague, Mr. Fink, here with my questions. But I just wanna start and say, this was so cool to actually be able to review a set of plans. It's been so long since I've had an opportunity to do that. I am a little bit curious, though, about why the full set of the plans were submitted to the council for review. I don't remember us ever having an opportunity to review a full set of drawings like this for a project.
You talked about it, and I thought it'd be a good idea.
Okay, that's fine. Owen, that question, though, is, most of the package that we received of the drawings in the back are for the enhanced neutral removal project, which was 11 years ago. Why are we looking at those as part of covering the filters? Okay, I see, thank you. Very minor technicality. My understanding is the legal name of our facility is Chesapeake Beach Water Reclamation Treatment Plant. The specifications refer to it as the wastewater treatment plant, just a minor point. And then, one thing I noticed that seemed to be missing from the documents was a requirement for a final inspection and punch list prior to final acceptance. Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Oh, and just, just a reminder again, I know it's not part of this project, but I'm just gonna throw out there one more time about looking for an opportunity to install some solar plant panels someplace at the plant. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Fink?
Yeah, this got pretty technical pretty quickly, so I don't have any additional questions, thanks.
Councilwoman Bodine?
Hi, yeah, thank you. Actually, my questions were mostly hit upon. One is, when we accept the completion of the work, is there a warranty on it? Okay, for how long?
10 years, I believe. 10 years from data completion.
Perfect. I think Larry kinda hit on one of my questions, which was a punch list to ensure. So, once we agree that the project is complete, it will be at a time when we have quote unquote inspected it, right? And who would do that? That would be our engineer, right, would say that whatever's in this packet was met to spec, and that is complete. Is that correct?
Yes, and we will make sure when we have the prebid meeting that we clarify that, that fact for the bidders.
Okay, so
Final punch list and inspection will take place.
So the final, like, approval that the project is complete is through our town engineer? I mean, so we have a process that will ensure that all these items, nothing comes back to us a year or two from now, saying we still need to do something regarding these covers. Okay, perfect. I would like to press a little bit on a cost estimate, because I forgot, I'll be honest. Is it like $10,000, $100,000, $1 million, just a ballpark?
I will get the cost estimate over to Town Council as soon as I get back to my desk.
Okay, and this is a shared expense, and so our partners are aware of it?
Yes.
Okay. And then Larry asked about the solar covers. I was asking, I had a question about that too. So all my questions have been answered. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, American, and Wayne, thanks for stopping by. American Rescue Plan Priority Projects don't need to introduce a whole lot about the, about that, since we all know, everybody in the, in the country knows about it, but this is, I, I know the town administrator met with the council members and discussed ideas, you know, and she put together this. It's in no particular priority order. And so what I wanna do is, and just so we know right up front, this is, this is, this is just the first stab at this. You know, this is a work session, we're gonna talk about it, we're gonna try to feel, when we're done, get the council to rank, rank how important it is to you, on a scale of 1 to 10, and then we'll just, you know, compile that, and then we'll come back and talk about it again. So it's not like it's a one shot where we gotta, you know, you delve into all of this, but it's, we're, we're doing it the right way. I notice a lot of towns, of cities took their time, are taking their time, they wanna do it the, the right way. I know some were anxious and, you know, I guess they're not as experienced as, as some others, but... So what I wanna do is go over these, I'm gonna have the, the presenter is the one that, you know, it was their idea, recommendation, or whatever, so I'm, I'm gonna ask the presenter to just give us a quick one-minute overview of, of what it is. I think we all pretty much got it, you know, figured out, but, and then I'm gonna ask the, you know, the, the council, if they care, to comment on it. And like I said, this is not the last stab, you know? And I'm gonna ask the council, since we have, well, we'll be down to 10, I'm gonna ask the council, if we can, I'm gonna try to move this along a little bit, so we don't spend a half hour on each item, just, you know, and, and this isn't the last time we're gonna talk about it either, you know, so we'll, we'll see how it goes. I will say that, and I'm sure everybody agrees, if they've been reading about this, this, about this, that, you know, the experts, and certainly, you know, the governor, many, many experts, you know, nationwide, but I have, have been advising various city councils to focus on infrastructure. Because when it's all said and done, when nobody in this room is here, because we've all moved on, and there's a whole nother group of people managing this, this town, they'll be darn glad that we took some of this, you know, bonus cash and addressed the infrastructure moving forward. So having said that, I'm, I'm gonna begin, I'm actually, I'm gonna go in an infrastructure order, and then we'll do the other ones. We are going to, Heath has decided he'd like to withdraw the broadband connectivity. And the, there's one here at the back, submitted by Councilwoman Bodine, about acquiring property, and we're gonna talk about that in executive session, and for obvious reasons, or you'll find out how obvious it is when we're there. So having said that, emergency preparedness, okay, this is something that the town administrator and I have been talking about, you know, as something that we really, really need. You've read what it is. I don't know, Holly, did you wanna add anything in addition to that long paragraph, or long sentence?
Sure, if I could just add, for Town Council, if, the purpose of, you know, what we're trying to do tonight and having this discussion is also to come up with a priority list. So if you don't mind, I've placed a sheet on each of your spaces. If you could just place a priority between 1 and 10, so that we can collect that at the end of the evening, and, and I will gather that information together.
And then you will all see it, as we, you know, move along with, with this, we'll know where we are as, as a group, you know? Besides, I was, did you have any questions, sir?
Thank you. So could you just, maybe I missed it, maybe you said it already. Could you just reiterate the amount of money we're talking about in terms of, for, to put towards these projects again?
Yes, Brittany, do you wanna get the exact number?
Yep, it's 5 million. It's about 5.9 million.
May I also ask a question? The, so in, in our original documents that we received, I marked up the broadband as something I wanted to ask some questions about and was kind of enthusiastic about. So may I ask, if that's gonna be removed, we're not gonna talk about it then? No, we can't, no, if you wanna talk about it, we will. If, if we can, then yeah, let's keep that in. Yeah, thank you. Okay, that's fair enough. So I did have, I did have a thought, maybe it'll come to me again. So, yeah, we're talking about the emergency preparedness.
So quick, okay, so the emergency preparedness idea came forward, actually, just in reviewing the water park as a location that could serve as a resting point, a meeting point, should there ever be a disaster, especially considering its proximity to the Northeast Community Center, which typically serves as a heating or cooling location in, in times of storms. So we have the, on the proposal for an emergency generator that would power the park, and also the restrooms or the showers are located, so that we could have emergency showers as well.
Okay, so that's, that's it there. If we have any comments, I'll begin with Councilwoman Bodine.
Um, actually, yeah, just a few. The first one is, so the Northeast Community Center is already serving as an emergency location, so this would be supplemental to that?
It would be in partnership to that location, or their support for that location.
And we don't have any sort of cost estimate for this at all? Like, do we think it'd be $1,500,000, $100,000?
Yes, Jay, did you wanna address?
I've got some budgetary numbers. I reached out to Curtis Engine and another supplier. So there's, there's three different scenarios. One giant generator that services the bath house and the pump house, two separate generators, so they're roughly about $110,000, just the cost of the generators. It's anywhere from $180,000 to $350,000 to install the infrastructure to repower these panels. So round numbers, you're looking at around $530,000 to make it happen, to power up everything. We'd have to do a few things to the bath house, because we winterize it, so we'd change a little bit of the plumbing if we had to come online in the off-season, and then it's about $4,100 a year, the maintenance of the generator, plus your fuel. So those are rough numbers, about half a million, $600,000, give or take.
Thank you. And, and this is, would the generator be supporting not just the showers, but also the Northeast Community Center? Do they have a generator that supports the emergency requirements there? Or would this be supplemental to it?
This would be standalone, just for town assets. They, they have their generator backup system.
So this generator would be solely so that the showers could be warm or hot?
And the bathrooms would be functional, toilets and such things.
Okay. All right, those are my questions. Thank you.
Yeah, I was, I was struck by this. My immediate reaction was, why would we not do this for Town Hall rather than a park? Hadn't thought of the showers, so I'm an idiot. But maybe that's the primary reason, and it makes sense. Is there, is there another reason why the council, why this wouldn't be a better building that people might naturally come to?
We do have a generator here.
I can tell, when we had that last heat wave, and, and the park was unfortunately closed, I realized that, but what an inopportune time not to have a backup generator, you know, because it was hot. It'd be nice to let the kids in town, you know, get in the pool, so, okay.
No questions about this particular item?
Okay, Councilman Morris?
Sir, thank you. We know that the Northeast Community Center has showers. They've got large locker rooms, showers there, and bathrooms. And they're on their own emergency generator. I'm not really sure if the gain is worth the expense for us to spend that kind of money to have generators for the water park, just to have some additional showers. And the sanitary for the water park, we have pumps required for those that need electric. They don't gravity flow, right? So that's why you'd need electric for those pumps.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm not, not really sure. And I like the idea of thinking about emergency situations. Emergency preparedness is very important. Not really sure how much more we're really gaining by trying to, to get the water park to be able to run. You know, you're not talking about, you're not even, are you talking, you're not talking about keeping the lazy river going and all that? You're just talking about the minimum needed for an emergency situation, where people would go down there, need the showers, need a place to shelter, and I'm not sure what a shelter, either.
While I had the two different contractors out, I had them look at everything, so we can itemize it, look at however we wanna do it. But I had them price everything, and then we can go from there. But since they're out, I wanted to just, anything that ran on power, go ahead and supply it. Because some of the features that do run the pool, run the other facilities, they're kinda intermingled.
Yeah, I guess we just need to decide, you know, what's important there in an emergency situation. And then you've got the approximately $4,100 a year in annual maintenance for Joe's generators there, too. And that's something that we would just carry in perpetuity. So open to discussion on it, but that's just at first blush, you know, my thoughts on that specific emergency preparedness. I mean, that's a little narrow schedule of work there, but my thoughts.
Councilman Parton?
Yeah, thank you. Just to be sure I understood the answer. So that estimate includes running the water park in the summer, right? So I'll let you answer that, yes.
The numbers I gave you would be to, if we came offline, we'd be totally self-sufficient online with the generators, the way, the way we operate today.
So, so, so I guess as you were alluding to, then, Mayor, if there was a heat emergency, we would have the pool and we lost electricity. In the, in the winter, when the, the water park is not functioning, they would still, we'd still have, be able to use that building and those restrooms and showers if they were needed in an emergency during the colder months when the water park was not online.
Even cook food.
And, and do we have an estimate of how many people could utilize that space? Let's say just the enclosed space, not the pool itself?
I can get you a better number on that.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's all my questions. Councilwoman?
Do we have any idea how much the town lost when the pool was down for a week or two? Or how long was it down?
It seemed forever. It was down about a week, and it's at least $10,000 a day.
It's about $70,000. Okay. All right. Right, thank you, no other questions.
Thank you. Next item, which is infrastructure, as I said, I'm, I'm gonna focus on the infrastructure ones now, and then just go back to everything that I, I missed. This is, this is the water park, as it says, you know, above the, the water pole repairs, two rock structures. I think, Holly, you might wanna give an overview on what we think we're facing in, in the future, maybe even the very near future.
We might be able to capture Wayne with his last few minutes of his virtual meeting this evening. But basically, this is what Wayne and his crew have been modeling with 3D, 3D models at the water park, and it is a repair that has to happen. It's basically all of the rocks and structures that are above, above the pool. So we have plugged in a number of approximately $2 million. But basically, all of those rocks and structures supporting kind of the mechanical equipment that, that runs the park is going to be replaced very soon.
Did you need to add anything to that, Wayne?
Wayne, can you, can you hear us?
Yes, I hear you.
Okay. Yes, did you wanna add anything?
Do I believe your $2 million estimate is the correct number?
Yeah, we just wanted to know if you wanted to add anything.
What we're modeling is everything above the floor, as Holly said. Cost estimate on that, I believe, is less than a million. I think the other revamp, if you will, of Collins Field, will be another million, if not more. So if you add it all together, I think your $2 million is probably a little bit low on that. I think it's a good idea to incorporate that into your emergency preparedness plan. We also need to take a look at, from a community center perspective, where that flood resiliency line falls for emergency preparedness concept there. I think that's something we should take a look at before we put too much of it down the road and make sure that is where we want to be, send people to shelter and stuff.
Hey, thanks, and I'll take, take questions. I, I guess what I wanna...
Mr. Mayor, procedural question. Why is the list that we received tonight different than the list that we had in our council packages?
I think I probably added one.
Well, there's a couple, actually.
Might add it, too.
Okay, all right.
I guess what, before I, I go to the councilwoman, is basically, I truly, you know, believe that, and it may be sooner than later, that one of these springs, we're gonna be looking at each other and saying, we may not be able to open the water park. You know, so we gotta start looking at that water park. It's, it's over, over 25 years old, I think. And what I found from being over there, that, you know, the, the culture of marketing the water park has changed under this administration, and it's changed for the better. And anybody that, that goes there can, can really see how people are enjoying themselves. It's a pleasant experience. It really, really is. It's not a place that people in, in the county and town don't wanna go to, because it's, it's just, you know, a zoo or Dodge City, as they used to call it. I mean, I, I used, my son worked there for five years, and he was breaking up fights all the time back in the old days. These, it was just, it was horrible, you know, we changed that. So the people in this town love our water park, and I'm glad they love it, you know? So that's why I felt important to put this out there as something to consider, because I do believe that one day, we're gonna be, we're gonna be looking at saying, we can't open the water park one time or at all this summer. So that's, uh... Councilwoman?
Yeah, I guess, I'll, I'll just make a, a statement first, and that is, when we build something, like the water park, it's incumbent upon us as a town council and an administration to maintain it. And I think that maintaining this infrastructure is critical. So let me just put that out there. I do have some questions about, this, this makes a point of saying repairs to rock structures I do have some questions about, this makes a point of saying repairs to rock structures above the water pool. What about all the stuff that we don't see that's underneath that was built upon pilings and infill? And so I guess my, I like this idea a lot. I'm really supportive of it. I think it's so easy to build new things, it's harder sometimes to maintain the infrastructure that we currently have. This is an opportunity to maintain and fix the current infrastructure that we have, and that's a great thing. But I guess my concern is if we're fixing what's on top of, my concern is what's below, and are we building it on a shaky foundation? So should we sort of like be, instead of having the word above, should it be below first? And then worry about what's above? So can someone answer that? Like, how is the fundamental structure of the pilings? The piping, the infill that I believe is gone? You know, how is all that stuff? Are we building it on a shaky foundation?
Yeah, so Jay or Wayne, do you want to answer that one?
Yeah, so back in the spring before we opened the park this year, I did a walk through and thorough investigation for the facility. That was exactly my concern, that I realized, with twenty-five years old, the park was going to fall, what's the bottom of that? What we found was there is no supplement of the base infrastructure. And I think it's very much worth saving. I think it's in very good shape. I think it'll be a force to replace it. So any revisions we make, or any adjustments, or any improvements we make, in my opinion, courts you're going to look at, parks you're going to look at, whatever is more than twenty-five years old, or needs repair. But my opinion, above ground structure is what is a dire need of help now. And what can be a stable face that I'm not concerned with?
When we talk about repairing the above water level structures, there's been water park committees over the past fifteen years. I've been involved in some of them, and there's, when we talk about this, are we talking about fixing what currently exists? Or changing anything about the general layout of the water park?
Well, the thing is, we're talking about changing the above ground structure. So all the rock, all those slides, all of the water cars. I believe we're going to take, my opinion is, we're going to take them all out and replace them. Could be the same theme, could be a different theme. But those above grade structures are, in my opinion, not worth saving.
My concern, and I think I might still have it at home, is that when we were on the Water Park Advisory Committee, about well before your time, maybe eight years ago, there was a water park study that was done, I may have it at home, and I think the estimate came out well over like three million, and that was like years ago. And so my concern is that if you're talking about re-changing the footprint of the water park in any substantial way, I think this is grossly underestimated for the cost. I'll just put that out there. I do think that what is needed is, I'm, I think this is a high priority. I think that the water park is a driver for many things. One is the happiness and joy of the citizens. Second is an economic driver. And third, it's an employment driver for our young people. My daughter, much like Pat's son, worked at the water park for three years.
Please stop me for one second. I believe Wayne has to go on his other meeting.
All right, I'm sorry. So anyways, I'm very supportive of this.
Wayne, thanks for-
We've got to be able to maintain our stuff.
Thanks. Councilman Fink, have a good evening, Wayne.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, you know, I've going for a personal record and possibly a countywide record for a number of trips down the slide this year, and I've only been to the water park twice.
Over what age?
One person, though. You know, I think, I think what my colleague said is accurate, and I'm a little bit bummed that Wayne had to jump because he mentioned Kellums as part of this as well. So I feel like this description here is not even remotely covering the depth of what we're talking about doing here. And that makes it a little hard to put a number next to this. I know this is sort of an initial conversation, but it sounds to me like we're going well beyond this. Does that, am I misinterpreting that particularly with what Valerie said?
So Wayne had estimated the particular above the pool repairs at a million. He was-
So why is it two million here?
Explain.
That was Jay and my estimate on it, and so he's revising that because he's the one doing the modeling right now. And so he's saying that's high.
Yeah, but I mean, okay. Okay, I mean, any other questions at this point? I feel like, I feel like there's a lot to dive into on that particular, right? But I'll, I know that's not tonight, so I'll leave that alone for now. Thank you. My question on this item would be, the span of time that we're showing here is six months.
Well, and that is, that is the thing, you know, we would really have to look at doing this this fall before the park reopened, so that we would limit the amount of time that the park would be down.
I understand, and I strongly support limiting the amount of time the park is down. But at this point, we've got no drawings, no plans, no nothing. The concept of being able to come up with that and actually put it out and get the construction done in six months is-
It could be a year and six months. It could be next year. The idea is that we have to have this discussion now while we have the ARPA funds.
Okay.
Right, the idea is that it would be a six-month window of time to get it done.
Good point, though. Councilman Morris?
Yeah. Not exactly sure that, that falls underneath emergency preparedness. I mean, it's more-
It doesn't, it falls under infrastructure.
Parks and Rec kind of deal.
Mr. Morris, if you look, it falls under infrastructure.
Yeah, I see we have it labeled there. I disagree that, well, it's definitely infrastructure. It's more of a park and rec thing, but I'm interested in the 3D modeling. That's just as an aside. Certainly in support of replacing anything that's deteriorating there. I know that I've got a little bit of familiarity with that cave structure there and some of the issues that Mr. Berry's pointed out over the past few years. I'd be game to develop a full schedule of work and replace everything at once. I think we should definitely look at if it makes any sense to do any phased replacements there. I think one of the key things there is to get some shelf-ready plans there so we can get the bids together. It's going to be tough to get bids for that, too, and it's very specialized work there. You know, the demolition of that, and I guess more or less replacing it in kind is kind of what we're talking about, really redesigning anything or a footprint, that is. It's just, you know, the stuff that's kind of covering the lazy river and the slides and these other things, small items that Wayne pointed out. So, I mean, I'm certainly in favor of investing in the water park. We need to be committed to the water park. I don't think we're talking about replacing the water park. That we're, this seems that something that we can have in hand, that we can manage. I think the, one of the tough things with that, though, is to put, putting together a good, solid schedule of work that's developed by our town or other engineer, just, you know, for us, so people know what to quote there. Really, my only comments about it, certainly in support of investing in the water park to keep it going, so.
Thank you. Councilman Parton?
Yeah, thank you. So, yeah, I thought there were a lot of great questions brought up, and I feel like there's more questions than answers right now. But, yeah, I think it's a worthwhile endeavor.
Councilwoman Hartman?
I'm totally behind you. I think this is great. I don't care if you call it infrastructure or Parks and Rec. I think it's fantastic, and maybe we'll find materials that are better than what we have now. So it could come out even better than what we have because, you know, things have changed in twenty years. So terrific. Besides that, I have one other question generically. Where we have on here, there's written grant eligible. Does that mean another grant eligible? Or some of these things, not this one, but other ones, like, sit one down. Coastal Resiliency says it's grant eligible. Yes. Which grant is that?
There are several grants at DNR.
So this would be like an additional money eligible?
Right, I was just making notes for certain projects that likely can receive some other funding as well.
Money from somewhere else.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, another infrastructure item, which Jay will address, the proactive saddle repair. Jay, you want to explain what that is?
Sure. And I was doing some math today at my office. But basically, ninety percent of our water main failures happen where we have underground power, and it's electrolysis and different phenomenons. And we're doing a lot after the fact when a water saddle fails. If you think about our oldest infrastructure in town, the campgrounds, and behind the firehouse, all the power is overhead, and you never see us out there working on a water main break. Richfield Station, Bayview Hills, power's underground, and that's ninety percent of our water main break. So when we have this phenomenon we just had on Sandsbury, it's electrolysis, saddle fails, I can tell you now that the next one down the line is going to be the next one that fails. I don't know when, but it's a lot more expensive for us to react to a water main break. The road, the soils, everything has kind of failed. If we can proactively go in and change the saddles before they break, it's minimal disruption, it's planned. This would be contracted out. We just don't have the public works staff to do it. But it would save us the money in the long run. We could plan them, and we can proactively, as we're addressing specific issues, and I've got some, I'm actually going to go where Josh is at to a conference tomorrow and talk to a guy just about it, some ways to research ones which will break next, try to figure out the phenomenon of why there's stray current underground. I've had BGNE out twice, and they are allowed a certain field around their power. And if you know anything about electrolysis, that hooks onto our copper saddles, goes to the endpoint, which is an anode, and the saddle fails. I could show you a whole dumpster full of parts that we've replaced. But basically, I know what's going to fail next, just don't know when. And I want to spend some money proactively, go out and fix them and plan them and save us as public works time and save the town money in the long run. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Councilwoman Hartman?
So you know which ones you want to go hit up, and you know how to protect them or fix them or keep this from happening to them?
To prolong the life. I don't know how to solve at this point the stray current underground. But there are different materials that we can put there, which we are doing now. So when we fix it, it's going to last a hundred years. But we know the next one down the street, it's a phenomenon that when it happens, the very next one will be the one that fails. And we're set up and we're reactive when we go fix it. But I could tell you now, I'd like to send out a crew and check the next three, which we can do a minimally invasive, check the saddle in the grass area, check it for voltage. If it has it, then we're going to go out and replace the saddle. And then we might run into the next four that don't. But no one's looking at it globally. We're just kind of reactive to it. Be nice to be proactive.
Right behind you. Good.
Thank you.
Councilman?
Yeah, thank you. So just out of curiosity, how long do the original saddles last approximately?
They should last a hundred years. Okay, so ones we've replaced in Richfield Station have failed nine years. And I've had BGNE out there to take their power offline twice, and we still had stray current in our copper laterals, which in some areas I can explain, some areas I can't. So I think the spending money on the explanation is not going to help us. I think spending money on resiliency and making them to where they won't suffer from electrolysis is the way to do it.
And so the original ones were supposed to last a hundred years, but they're not, and they're made out of copper? Is that right?
There's, so there's some that are cast, or some that are poly-dipped ductile, and there are some that are stainless. And I have found that every one of those at some point has failed.
And the ones that you are going to use to replace these, what are they made out of? And why are you convinced they're going to last a hundred years?
So when we replace them, it's stainless and brass. It's a more expensive saddle. But the biggest part of it is we add another hundred years with the anodes. We're putting sacrificial anodes on those, so the electrolysis will have something to, sacrificial metal, if you will, instead of the saddle, if you understand. Basically, it's the same anode on a boat motor. So it's designed to give it another, up to a hundred years of life. But it'd be nice to proactively go in, change out the saddle if it's deteriorated. If we find it's not, add that anode, a lot more cost-effective and minimal disruption, and can be planned.
Thank you.
Councilman Morris?
The, I guess you're talking about starting with like primary saddles and your primary locations, not necessarily secondary stuff where branch lines go to single-family homes?
Well, every single-family home has a saddle.
Right. So all of your saddles are in this realm of discussion that you're talking about, not just anything?
The condos are fed with ductile off the thing into the building, which is grounded at the meter. I'm not so worried about that. And when, when we came onboard with Paul Woodburn, what they're building now, we changed to HDPE and poly, so it's not grabbing the current going to the anode. This is basically from Greenspring back from Richfield.
Right, I know that reaching to the choir with the failures in Richfield Station, you know, we've got some of the townhome parking areas that I think they paved just four, four or five years ago, and a lot of that's been cut up with these failures.
Sure.
I know it's been tough, you know, and I know in an emergency situation, it's definitely, you pay a premium for that. I want to jump around here a little bit, excuse me. The specifications at the Heritage, they're not subject to the electrolysis phenomenon, is that right?
Correct, we changed-
You're out ahead of that over there.
We changed everything there. And the biggest part of that is using non-conductive materials. Our main is C900, and our laterals are two-inch, four-hundred PSI HDPE. So there's no current that's going to travel up and down the line, come to an endpoint.
So as you're kind of going through determining, I'm in support of being proactive. I mean, you know better than anybody in this room where and how and when some of this, we're looking at, you know, failures that are coming, going to be online here, coming that, you know, that we're confronting here. How would you check saddles that are in paved areas, though? I mean, what would your process be, you know?
So I have a plan. You know, if you think about your meter, it's in the, it's in the green area in your yard. Richfield Station has what's called a spiral meter on each one, so that's where the current stops. It can't travel through the house and ground out because it's a gasketed fitting, and it can't travel up and down the main because it's C900. So I would go in proactively with a contractor, dig up that copper line in someone's front yard, omen out, see how many milliamps. If it's got milliamps, then we're digging up the saddle. If the saddle's fine, we're going to add an anode. If it's not, which it's not going to be, we'll replace it. So I'm going to start with the most minimally invasive gathering information. But while we're there, we're going to be prepared to put the anodes on and take it one phase at a time. This is also something that we can't accomplish in one year, just because of the logistics and the timing. But in the long run, I think the money we spend on it, we will recoup just in savings and disruptions in public works time.
Well, I know it's been, this process has been ongoing for about fifteen years, maybe longer in some other areas. During the ARP season, I'm going to say ARP season, when we have this extra money available to us, I mean, I could see a larger budget in trying to attack some of that stuff beyond ARP. It still needs, it still seems like we need, you know, to have a budget to make those type of repairs, and I think we have been doing that. You know, I'm not, not making any prolific statements here, just kind of probing this a little bit. I'm in support of being proactive, and if we can project and we feel it's going to save us money in the long run and provide better, more reliable service to town residents, I'm certainly interested in that. So appreciate the work that is going into this, and we'll go into it, Jay. Thanks.
Sure, thank you.
Councilman?
Strongly support. This is an absolute necessity to protect our infrastructure and potable water service to our residents. So it's critical that we proceed with this. I do wonder if we ought to be thinking about a study to investigate the source of those stray currents.
And that's exactly what I want to start this out with. There's, I'm actually going to talk to one at this conference tomorrow, if not tomorrow, Wednesday. They did some of this research in Frederick County, did find some was underground power, some was acidic soil, some was lime-treated cement soil, which we have in Richfield. But I've saved literally the last fifty saddles that we have failed, and I can tell electrolysis. But I, so I'm going to look into that, start the study. When the Richfield Station was first started, it was county code to ground your house to the plumbing. And that was standard code, I'm sure you probably know for a long time. So any stray current in their house was going, it was grounded to your line that came into your house. That got changed right after Richfield Lane. So I have a lot of studies, and people are kind of aware of a lot of it, but we need to look at one by one, and we're going to have to pace someone to do that.
Yeah, but it's critical, though- Yeah, but it's critical that we continue with this program of replacing these corroded saddles. But I do think ultimately that we need to find out what's causing the problem, the underlying problems.
Agreed.
Thank you, sir. Councilman.
Yeah, I have nothing to add to this, you know, but a- as always, you've researched this pretty thoroughly. So good.
I might have missed it. How many, just an estimate, how many saddles are we talking about or at least investigating?
Hundreds.
Hundreds?
Mm-hmm.
Are they all located in Richfield Station or elsewhere?
That's where I would start. I know the ones in Dolores Court and Bayview Hills, um, they share a main and we can get to the curb stop and test it there minimally, and I have. And there's voltage on those too. Um, so in Richfield Station, yes, hundreds. Except for, you know, the, the good news is what the town has built lately, Chesapeake Village, Richfield Station on, what they're getting ready to start building, we've made measures where this is not going to be a problem in the future. But we're still paying for the, for what was approved. And it's just the practice of the day in the past. And unfortunately, we have some acidic soil and that accounts for a few, but ninety percent of them are electrolysis. But it's hundreds of them.
So if there's hundreds of them and if we need to potentially pay for saddles, pay for anodes and the labor for the contractor, do we really think it's only going to cost seven hundred and fifty thousand? It seems kind of low.
Well, what I think we're going to find, and I, and I've done some of this research is where the peds jump across the street and the power's on the other side and the laterals go across, we're not having that phenomenon. So I think doing the study, we're going to be able to eliminate zones that say, hey, this area is unaffected. But we have to physically look, we can omen and milliamp it. But I have found some areas in Richfield, um, at the end of Sandsbury where there's no current in a copper lateral. Don't ask me why, it's still underground power. But those saddles are, look exactly the day that they put them in, the tag's still on them. I mean, they're just as shiny as the day you put them in. They should be. You can go right across the street where the power's underground and, um, and it's a different case. So when we do this initial study, which I'd like to do, it's going to eliminate a third of this changing. So then we're left with two thirds, but it's still going to be a few hundred. And then even still, to find a contractor to come in and do it and phase it in, it's going to take time. It's not something, even if we had the money and the people here now, that we could logistically do at one time. But we need to start a, in my opinion, a better way of be proactive instead of reactive.
Have we, or do you, or does Wayne, um, do we have like a GIS or a map of this? Like that shows where, in a digital form, all these things that you have replaced over time, the saddles or where, you know, do we have a GIS of this information?
We, so I have a paper map and a notebook of that. We don't even have, uh, you know, the plans from Richfield were MyLars. Um, the latest sections we have digitally, but everything else that I'm kind of talking about was paper MyLars. And to be honest, a lot of them aren't as built, they're actual just plans. But the good thing is, you know, every house has a visible feature, a meter that you can see and kind of know where the saddle's at. So when it comes to doing the work, we know where those features are at.
Yeah, I mean, it's just something that we as a town ought to think about is that when it comes to infrastructure, having a public, uh, infrastructure GIS would be most appropriate. And you could also add attributes to it, like the age of your pipes and all that, so you know where your inverted pipes are, you know where your problems are, you know what's been solved.
Correct.
Because having them on paper is not efficient, um, at all. I, I think I understand. I think it's localized. I think you have a plan and I think that's great. So I have no more questions. Thank you.
Want to add a comment, Greg?
Mr. Mayor, um, Jay, shooting from the hip a little bit, how many saddles have you replaced in Richfield Station over the last fifteen years?
Uh, I have a number that I started tracking when I took this position. I'll get it to you, but it's, it's over a hundred.
Hundred maybe.
Yeah.
It's been, yeah. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, council. Um, next I'll go to the third and final infrastructure project, which is, um, if we're listed here as coastal resiliency planning, but I think it's a little more than that. Um, and, and Larry, would you like to give us a little bit of a, I mean, before I would say this, this is obviously something that we clearly know is right in front of us if you've ever picked up a newspaper in the last couple of years. And this is actually one of those projects that, um, you know, in ten years, fifteen years, whatever it is, someone's going to be sitting here, not us, saying, um, why didn't someone look at this before? You know, it was obvi-, it's, you know, it's obviously out there, you know? So Larry, if you want to give us a little quick overview?
Brief overview, uh, this, we've talked about this before in some meetings and we have the coastal resiliency group working on this. Um, these are projects that are associated with climate change and sea level rise. And we know how critical that is to our particular community. If you've been watching the, uh, news lately about the storms that are occurring, it's just crazy what's going on in Texas where they are in a prolonged drought for months. And then they got clobbered with almost a foot of rain in less than a day. Fortunately, we're not seeing that condition here yet. But if you remember the end of October, the unnamed storm that hit us the end of October that caused extensive flooding through the town. These are all associated with these projects that the coastal resiliency group is going to look at to, um, identify ways to protect our town from, uh, climate change and sea level rise. That project is also being coordinated, I'll say coordinated, with North Beach. Uh, each town is doing it separately, but we are coordinating with each other because mother nature doesn't understand town boundaries. So we need to make sure one town doesn't do something that conflicts with what the other town is doing. So it's an ongoing project, there is grant funding available and our coastal resiliency steering committee meeting actually is this coming Thursday night to continue looking at those alternatives. Thank you.
Councilwoman Bodine, do you have any, any comments on this, this project?
Uh, no, the only, well, I, I just, I have a few. One is as we go about looking at, um, where flooding is occurring, I'd like to remind the council about the flooding on Twenty Seventh Street that was actually started by the streetscape program of about fifteen years ago when they put the curbs and the water comes down Twenty Seventh Street and it floods the homes down, um, near there. Um, there is an inlet there, which I believe Jay tried to camera, but it was filled in by concrete, um, at some depth the pipe was. And so if that could just be, that pipe be opened up and a grate be put there so that you have an inflow for the stormwater, it would immensely help that area. And also, of course, where Larry lives, um, that's really problematic. So, I mean, these are obvious areas, but one I'd like to draw attention to also is in the October storm, um, the parking lot, um, that's associated with the Northeast Community Center and with, um, the water park flooded, um, actually had water there. And so as we also think about the water park and any refurbishment there, um, we need to take into consideration, or maybe the coastal resiliency group could, um, the effects on that parking lot and therefore the water park itself. Um, I just think that'd be, you know, something might be potentially overlooked a little bit because also the entrance to the railway trail had water up to it. And so we just need to realize these things, um, where the water's coming. Um, other than that, um, the only question I would have, you know, I don't know if it's appropriate, I mean, if we could have a price on something specific, that'd be great because then we could say, yes, it's extremely important, but without him in a price on something, it's, it's hard to, like, I don't know how much time we have, um, to really like spend or plan, you know what I mean? So, um, if there are specific projects, and I named a few, um, that'd be great. So that's my comments on this one is it's definitely needed. There's definitely problems that everybody can see. And it'd be great if we could pick some and start addressing them in some manner, you know, with real concrete projects.
Councilman.
You, um, you have noted here seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, for this existing project. I assume we're going to spend all that in just doing the research that you guys are doing. Um, but I, it's sort of a, I, I understand what Valerie's saying in that, you know, in the absence of that, I'm not quite sure how else fits into the bigger picture of, of these funds that we have, because I don't know what we'd be prioritizing at the moment. Um, so that's really all I have on that. I, I wanted to maybe wind back one second on the water park, um, as an emergency preparedness. Uh, I, I should know this, but I don't. Uh, in the event of a flood, uh, where does the water park stand? Is it underwater or not?
Where the flood is.
Well, not really.
A lot of the parking around it would definitely, um, be flooded.
Okay, I, that would, that would make me stop and think again about that as an emergency location. But then, of course, Northeast Community Center, same thing. But, I mean, it seems a very common possible emergency for which we are preparing would be a flood. And if no one can get to the, the site, it's not going to help anyone. So I think we need to consider that in our emergency preparedness. Thanks.
Add anything, Larry, to you?
Uh, nothing more to add.
Councilman Morris?
Yes, sir. Well, definitely in a realm of emergency preparedness and infrastructure. Um, I'm looking forward to the coastal resiliency group's recommendations. Uh, I know that y'all have been working on that, trying to get some ideas together. Um, I'm certainly skeptical as to how we're going to stop flooding, um, in certain parts of town. Um, you know, I think I've mentioned before, you know, one of the tenants here, the emergency preparedness is, you know, pre- being prepared for flooding and being able to anticipate that, you know, having the equipment in hand, you know, the kind of things that we would need to quickly move, uh, clean up after a storm. Um, we're redesigning some things, we're looking at some things at Kellum's, you know, and, and all I would be looking at is a way to, so the water to kind of drain in the way that we want when the water abates, you know? We're not going to build a wall around the town and keep the water out there. Um, but again, I'm, that, you know, Larry's group there, I'm certainly looking forward to what recommendations they're going to have. And that being said, um, that stuff's really expensive. I mean, I, you got to plunk like a million dollars down, I mean, to begin with in like a budget for something like that, I mean, not knowing. Um, but, um, that's just my thoughts at first blush.
Thank you. Councilman Parton?
Yeah, thanks. Um, no, I think, uh, I'll echo some of the comments that I've already said. I think we need to have more of a plan, you know, what the next step would be before I could really get on or get off in terms of, you know, using some of these funds for that. Although I'm obviously very supportive of what the coastal resiliency group is doing. And, um, I think it's very, very important. So I don't have any other comments.
Councilwoman.
Similar, Wayne. If you can think of how much money you want, write it in. So that we have something to, you know, if you want another hundred thousand to keep it going, then put that in there and we'll see how everything adds up. Can be one of those roundup things, you know, like you get at the grocery store. Round up a hundred thousand for coastal resiliency. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next I'll skip back to, um, public health opioid. Uh, Keith, do you want to give a, a overview?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so I did a little more research on this to try to figure out what made sense and what did not. So as you all know, we are in the middle of a opioid epidemic and, and a mental health crisis as well, uh, brought on both by addiction issues as well as the pandemic that we've been going through for the last two to three years. And so I think, um, you know, providing our residents, while I agree, infrastructure is really important, but without the, without the software, the people, our infrastructure doesn't really matter all that much. And so I do think we should be, uh, putting some funds, uh, for the health and wellbeing towards our residents as well. And so, um, when I've explored this a little bit with some of the folks at the health department and, and, um, you know, something similar has been done by CASA in terms of they set aside, I think, five thousand dollars into a fund that they worked with the Calvert County Health Department. So folks, um, let me back up. A lot, a lot of people who are below the poverty line are able to get, uh, insurance coverage through the state for these kind of, this kind of care as well as through the Calvert County, um, as well, the health department. And so, but there are people who are above the poverty level, who may be suffering that, but they're still not, let's say, flush with cash. And they have private insurance and, and their copayments are quite expensive for them to go see counselors, for them to go get the, the medical assistance that they might need, uh, to get over their challenges. And so what, what they did is they, um, worked with the health department and, and when people who qualified went and did a doctor's visit, they would submit that information to the county and the county would then submit that to CASA. And they would say, okay, we're going to cover their co-pay, which may be fifty bucks or a hundred bucks, depending on how much their insurance covered, to help get past that barrier, the entry barrier for them to get their service. So that might be one way of, of doing this. Another is, um, there's, uh, transportation can be an issue, uh, for folks because of childcare issues, because they may have lost their license and they can't get to their appointments and that kind of thing. And so I know right here in, in our town, we have a, a health department outreach or outpatient program that goes on, but they only are able to provide level one treatment. If you need more intensive treatment that were at level two treatment, and I don't know the exact definitions of those, but it's more frequent visits, they have to go to Barstow in, in Prince Frederick to get that. And so getting there can be a challenge for, for many. And so, um, if we could expand the coverage that we offered here in the beaches area, that might be, um, helpful to do that. How much will it cost? I don't really know, but I would think somewhere in the fifty to, uh, two hundred thousand dollar range might be, um, depending on the approach that we took and, and, you know, how we wanted to structure it in terms of, you know, do we want to put forth like a pilot project, a two-year pilot project or something to help and see if it does help improve that? The other thing we might want to do prior to doing it is send out a survey to people and say, is this something that would be useful for you to do one of these two, to have access to one of these two types of programs? But anyway, that's, that's my ideas.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman.
I think they're great ideas. I hope that we can find a way to do that without a whole lot of paperwork overhead, which, you know, just discourages everybody, not just not having money, but how much work it is to get to that, you know, fifty bucks to get there. So, uh, totally supportive and, uh, hope you can find a, a clear, a clear project for it.
I certainly respect the work that Keith and that the opioid group has been doing in the community, um, certainly an asset. Um, and as far as opioid addiction is concerned, uh, I think the town is in a better place today than we were pre-opioid, uh, awareness group. What you're proposing seems that those are ongoing costs year to year. Um, and it's certainly open to some discussion. I'm, I'm interested in what North Beach, other municipalities may be doing to that effect. Um, two-year pilot project, if we decided to try to move forward with something like that, makes sense. On the other hand, I'm not sure the town in Chesapeake Beach should be getting involved in healthcare for people that can't afford it. In particular with, with the opioid, um, it's kind of like, I'm not going to compare it to anything else, but, um, it is devastating. But, uh, they may something be better left to the county health department, but open to discussion.
Okay, thank you. Sir?
Well, unfortunately, as we've heard so often, this is a continuing problem and challenge and needs to be addressed. Just to build a little bit on Councilman Morris's comment, uh, and I'm sure this is happening, this does need to be done in conjunction with the county health department. So to make sure it's a countywide program, yes, we are a standalone political entity, so we will need to do some of our own work, but we just need to make sure it's coordinated countywide. Thank you.
Councilman.
Yeah, the only, I've just quickly, I would just echo that, um, I am hugely supportive of the idea. I am, I am concerned the, uh, opioid epidemic has been with us for a long time. I don't know that it's going away anytime soon. Um, and so this is an annual budget cost, um, that we need to think about, I think, and tell me if I'm wrong about that, that we need to think about not just for a one-time set of funds that we have, find on this particular.
Councilwoman.
Keith, I like the idea of supporting help with copays. And I think if we did do, since these are limited funds, you know, like they have a time limit. If you did a pilot project for two years on figuring out the path and process for co-pay support, um, for the, and then whatever the appropriate, um, income level is, I don't know what that is, but whatever the income level is, then after two years with these unexpected ARPA funds, we would know what the line item potentially is for an ongoing program. So what I would encourage you to do is think of it as like a, uh, the process? You know, like get the process running and, or consider it. And then, you know, what is a level of effort from town staff to have the paperwork throughput, you know, to reimburse the funds or however it might happen? Um, I think that if there was, I think I would leave it in the county's hands to determine whether or not they want to. hands to determine whether or not they want to make what currently is in Chesapeake Beach level one to level two. And I think that could potentially end up like, which, if the council decides that's what they want, it's fine, but almost like a library situation where, where every year have a line item for the equivalent of rent. And so if that's what they want, you know, that's what they want. I think that, that having the support or supplement for the copays is much more practical, because in a two-year time period, we'll know exactly what line item costs we're talking about. And see, if it ends up being ten thousand, twenty thousand a year for a line item, I think you got yourself an easy sell, man. You know what I mean? But we don't know. And so that's what, you know, with the two options I think you gave us, level one to level two, and then the, I think that first one is immensely doable, especially if you consider a pilot project. And then get, you know, that's my thought. And then we can also gauge the level of effort from town staff, if it's overwhelming or not.
Thank you. Next, Councilwoman Bodine, Japanese knot, knotweed removal?
Yeah, this will be really quick. You know, being a member of the green team, and just a resident of town, we have an invasive plant problem. Either we decide to start tackling it or we don't. And yes, where the Japanese knotweed is at the entrance to Brownies Beach and the actual water is one and only one spot where we have an invasive plant problem. But if we can do one area, much like Keith's pilot project for the opioid supplemental, you know, help with the copays, this would be one project of a very invasive plant. So if any of you have walked on Brownies Beach recently, you get to the very end where the water is, look to the left and you'll see the Japanese knotweed. And if you go down there frequently, you'll notice that it keeps creeping further and further up. Well, we have some wonderful plant species down there. One's my favorite is called a fern. And this fern is like on the, if you're walking down, it's on the right-hand side. And there's a sign for it. And it's kind of specialized to that sort of environment. And it looks like this wonderful little valley going up of ferns. And if that Japanese knotweed were to jump, if you will, the walkway, you would then have a problem. It's extremely hard to eradicate. And that's why we got the estimate of a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars. And yes, it's just one area. It's not dealing with the cliffs on the boardwalk. It's not dealing with English ivy, which is taking over the town everywhere. Once again, I'll have to, you know, go up and do the pine trees near the Chesapeake Beach sign coming off of two sixty, because once again, it's climbing up the pine trees. So you could almost treat it like a pilot project if you wanted to. And that it's one area, one invasive, one environmentally sensitive area. Can we, you know, protect it or not? It depends what, you know, where our priorities are and if we want to protect that area. So that's, that's what it is.
Councilman?
I'm not really an expert on this. I, I have a feeling that Peggy will have something to say about this. So it sounds, you know, I know that invasive species is an issue, so it sounds certainly like a manageable project. And I like the idea of it as a one-off, so starting point.
Councilman?
No further questions. I'll defer to Councilwoman Hartman.
Want me to just skip you guys, Councilman Morris?
I think the knotweed's been problematic for as long as I can remember. I mean, if it's something that, you know, attacking it like this is something where we could be assured it's not coming back, you're, you're looking at eradicating the knotweed in a particular location, I guess.
In that one area, not throughout town, in that one area?
Yeah, if, I guess the green thumbs that be felt that that was, you know, something that was really important, I'm certainly open to discussing that. I don't, I don't think I have anything else I could add to that.
Councilman Parton?
Thank you. I struggle with this, because I do think, I don't like invasive species. I like the, you know, want to support the natural ecology of an area. Because I think, and I don't know a lot about the Japanese knotweed, but I would presume that very few native animals utilize that. So, so I think it would be great to get rid of it all. I struggle with it because, yeah, we're going to get rid of it in that one area. Still going to be in a lot of other areas, and it's going to spread back into that area unless we keep after it. The other thing I struggle with is a beach in thirty years will be underwater. So that whole area there that's low lying will be gone. So, you know, so I go back and forth on this, presuming we were headed in that same direction. But anyway, that's what I have to say on that.
Thank you. Councilwoman, please tell us what you do not like about Japanese knotweed.
I do not like it. I like this project a lot. I know it's a small unit area, but what I think we could do with this, if there's a way to do a pilot project successful getting rid of a species, is use it as a jump-off point to run other projects and perhaps get funding elsewhere in addition, you know, from the other conservancy areas saying, look, we did this project, we got rid of this, we could do this project and fix this. And step by step, try to eliminate some of the many miseries that are coming through. I know in our HOA, we did that one year. We spent several thousand dollars and had all the Japanese barberry removed. And it, you know, it's pretty much gone from there. And I do think it's possible to take care of this in a big lump. Maybe it won't be a hundred and fifty thousand, and we can get rid of it in somewhere else, or perhaps some of that nasty English ivy. But I support that completely. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Keith?
Create a carbon zero town by 2030 if we're not underwater.
There you go. So root cause, right? So emissions, emissions, carbon emissions are what's causing climate change. And so this would be our step, one step that we could take to reducing the carbon footprint of the town, reducing our emissions, reducing hopefully our, our impact on flooding, you know, potentially. Obviously, there's a lot of other people living on this world besides us here in Chesapeake Beach, and you can argue, well, okay, what's six thousand people going to do? It's hard to tell. But I think it'd be a great, if we could do that, make it a demonstration project for the town. I think it's something that the, the state would pay attention to, you know, if we were moving in, in that direction. And it would be encouraging our residents to be hopefully doing the same thing. So anyway, what would it take to do that? I don't know, off the top of my head, to become totally carbon zero, because I think we'd need to do a study first, and that would probably cost somewhere in the fifteen to seventy-five thousand dollar range, fifty to seventy-five thousand, but just based upon some of the other studies that we've had going on. So anyway, and, and by town, does that mean just the town infrastructure, you know, the government, or does that mean all the residents being, you know, carbon zero? That's, I think that's up to us. I think it would be great to shoot for all the residents, but that would take probably eight years. But for the town to do it, we could probably do it in two or three. Thanks.
Hey, thanks. I'll stay on this side and start with, with Councilman Hartman.
So when you say the town, you mean just what, how the town operates, or the businesses within town?
Yeah, so that, you know, that's where it's a link open to interpretation, exactly how we do it. I would say we start with the town government infrastructure first and make it carbon zero. And then we start encouraging everyone who lives in the town, including the businesses, to follow suit. I can't say you can't, probably can't force them, but you know.
But you could give them ideas.
Yeah, exactly.
So I think that's nice, to having, doing a, let's say, fifty to seventy-five thousand, doing a study to say, here's what you can do, and here's the places you can approach. It also lends itself to the, in a long way, the coastal resiliency, by not, you know, polluting as much. Thank you. Maybe the storms will slow down.
Councilman Morris?
Yeah, I'd follow along behind Peggy there. There's some good study that would be in order there. Like California and some other states recently who have mandated certain, I don't want to say they're carbon neutral, we know that states are falling in suit here. And I think that it's not going to be too long before the state of Maryland and their ideas of, I don't want to say carbon zero, but there's the energy, whole energy conservation movement and limiting pollutants is part of that, it's going to fall in our lap. You know, I think the state, these states are going to end up directness. And that doesn't mean that we shouldn't be doing some things to lead by example. I think it's appropriate for this town, just to have a fantastic green team, but to be kind of trying to push the envelope a little bit here, particularly our position here on the bay. So I'm certainly not necessarily wanting to be a follower with those kind of things. I just think some, some additional study and where, what we can do to affect your ideas here, you know, you know, what those would be, transitioning to electric vehicles, I suppose. With the tech, the technology comes faster and faster. And so I would expect in a couple of years from now, I mean, there's going to be technology that is in our hands that we're not even thinking about right now. I know that the solar panel stuff, that industry is growing by leaps and bounds, and with the increases in electricity that are on the horizon, some significant increases coming, there's going to put a lot more pressure on that. We've got entrepreneurs, entrepreneurs like Tesla that are trying to work on maximizing panels. So we've got whole, whole home batteries. You know, these things are on the horizon. So, you know, with an eye on technology changing, knowing that states are going to mandate some things eventually for, for us all, looking ahead, trying to see where we can affect some things here positively. It seemed like a good idea, study, I guess.
Thank you. I'm going to weigh in a bit. Obviously, you know, it's a laudable project. Nobody would say that it's not. We read about this stuff. It's, you know, you know, we need to get there as, as, as a, as a world, quite frankly. But I think that, from my perspective, that this is something that I think that possibly the, should be starting at the state level, and the town should be ready to jump in with the state, not the other way around. It usually doesn't work that way. There's, there's a lot of legislation that has been coming up last couple of years. I think Larry and I have talked about a couple of it that has to deal with this sort of thing, as well as, you know, coastal stuff. And the legislators in Annapolis, well, I guess they'll get elected, you know, soon. And, but they've, they're all heading that way. You know, it, it takes a while to get bills passed and to go statewide for stuff, but they are heading that way. And I, and I see Maryland being more on the, on the side of, you know, getting there a whole lot quicker than, say, some of the states around us, like Delaware and Pennsylvania. So, you know, it is an admirable project. I don't know, I think, I don't know that, you know, it's, how do I be nice here? I, I don't know that it's, it's in my top ten, only because I think this needs to come from the state, and I think then we need to be ready to be on board with the state. Now, having said that, I think we should monitor the legislation as it's being introduced this, this, you know, winter. And Keith, as you know, I'd be glad to work with you when, when these bills are being introduced and lending our support for, for stuff like that. That's actually where I, as mayor, see the strength of Chesapeake Beach coming. Okay, not trying to, you know, poo-poo the idea, but just saying as, as I see how, how things go. But, you know, it's, I'm glad you brought it up, you know, and I'll just, if I didn't, I felt a need to speak from my mayor's seat on this one. Councilman?
I'll just offer a slightly different opinion of that, that I think sometimes the way you get your state legislators to take action is by starting at the lower levels. And that would be us. And when I was taking the classes to get that certification as a climate change professional, we had these exact discussions of where do you start in trying to control carbon emissions? And the, the answer was, start right here. Start with me, and you, and you, and then over there, and then you just grow from there. This whole carbon zero issue is tied directly to the sustainability and the climate change and sea level rise and all those things. And I think the way we can pressure our state and federal legislators is by towns like us taking these steps. Can we do everything without the state's support? No, we can't. But there are a number of steps that we can take to begin that process and be able to look at our state legislators and say, this is what our little town of six thousand people did. What are you doing? So I support this. Thank you.
Well, and if I can just, you know, retract any thought that I may have given, because this is a work session, that's what we're here to do, is, it's funny that you said that, because when, I guess, six years ago, when the opioid, you know, crisis first started to, you know, be talked about and stuff, we were ahead of the state, because I was at these meetings. I was a new mayor at these meetings. And, and we were ahead of the state. And they got right with it. And, and, you know, and then we, you know, and actually, they just forgot all about us now, because now it was their idea, you know. But, okay, so thank you for that side of it, Larry. Councilman?
When it comes to this kind of project, I, I'm a bit of a nihilist. And by that, I mean, of course, I, I support this. But I, I oftentimes say it's kind of spitting in the wind. I know that's in direct conflict to what, to what Larry just said, and I, I know my heart is with Larry, but my head is, it's, it's spitting in the wind. I, I, you know, again, I'm a nihilist, so take that for what it's worth. All of that being said, you know, if this comes up before us, I would support it a hundred percent. And I would even love to see us take a page out of the C-Box playbook and leverage and involve the elementary school or any other educational component that we can, because that's really where you're no longer spitting in the wind, when you can start to change the way people think when they're, when they're ten years old. So I, I offer that as.
Thank you. Councilwoman?
Yeah, I'll just offer a few comments. I'll start with this. I don't really prefer or not prefer a study. Like the water park study that I mentioned that was done about eight years ago, absolutely nothing happened with it. But I think what we can do here is add policy in our projects and our purchases. And so we can look at, the next time Jay wants to purchase a vehicle, is what is the practicality or the added expense of purchasing an electric one? We may not have the physical landscape to do solar, but I know that there's work in developing solar shingles. Every purchase that we do, we, maybe we could have a policy where we ask for what green oriented initiative can this RFP have in it? And so we've tried to take baby steps like the electric charging stations. I don't know how often they're used, but it's a start. And so my point here is, I don't necessarily care one way or the other if we call it carbon zero town by 2030. To me, that's just words. But how can we affect change? And I think we can affect change through asking and ensuring that when we get an RFP, or we're making a purchase, or we're changing a policy, or we're doing a process, that we see if we can add something quote unquote, green to it. And I think the downfall with what I just said is that you can't do PR on it. You can't public relations it as well. If you have a study, you can PR it, you know, and try to get some public support for it. But if you're actually, actually talking about pragmatic, not spitting in the wind, but real change, then we as council people, when we get an RFP, we can say, we can look at it from that perspective. Or when we get a, a request for a, a new public vehicle, we can just ask the question, and then encourage, if it's ten percent more of the cost, is it worth us to consider making that purchase then? So I'm looking for real change, and not just like a slogan, you know, what can, what really can we do? We can change our policies, we can change our processes, and we can add, you know, request to We can change our policies. We can change our processes and we can add, you know, request to add whatever clever thing we can come up with into our, our RFPs. And that's how we can affect real change, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to follow up on a couple of comments there. I, I don't know how old the C-Box program has been. I've been reading an awful lot around, there's all kinds of oyster spat people are proud of around the bay now. You know, so you know, there was an example of where we're kind of leading some things and affecting some positive change there. You know, marching in a particular direction per councilwoman there, you know, just in our everyday marching forward, our business, what we're doing, we can consider green things rolling in there, not this across the board policy change necessarily, but knowing that we're moving in a particular direction, there are some decisions and some uh, conversations that could be had along the way, uh, knowing that the states are, are going to eventually do something here in Maryland before Virginia for sure. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good. Next, um, East, there we are. Um, I'll let you explain it, Keith.
Okay. Apparently I was kind of prolific when it came time to add these in. So um, so this one is.
It's one of those Charlie ones where I got some comments, but I'm gonna.
Establish a septic tank relief fund to convert uh, to public sewer. So, so I, I, you know, when ideas were asked for, this came up because I know there are people still in town who are on septic tank and who are concerned about having to convert over. And so I just thought, well, you know, maybe this is one way we could help that conversion is to set some funds aside. I don't know exactly how many I, in my head, I want to say there's like 20, 20 households. Maybe there's more, maybe there's not. I don't know.
About 250.
250.
It was 250. It was 250.
Wow, wow.
Six years ago. It's 250 now.
So I thought it was a lot less than that. So anyway, but I'll, I'll push forward. And so anyway, you know, this would be one thing that I thought might help with that if we were so inclined. But again, you see from the numbers of houses that I thought were in there about what I thought the price point would be on that. Maybe 200, $300,000, but um, for that, there's a lot more. And I know there's other programs out there that the county has had and that the, I think maybe even the state has had to help offset some of those costs as well. But uh, anyway, that was my idea there.
And I, I guess before I go to the, the, the councilwoman, I'll recount the uh, you know, so sometimes there's a word in politics called a bloodbath. And uh, one of the last things that uh, former mayor Wal did before he left was to create a, a bloodbath for himself. And he had a meeting right in his room of value, probably there. And, and he, and he, you know, he, he wanted to, I guess he wanted to force everybody in the southwest part of town, most of those homes were, and uh, he's lucky he was leaving office because the tomatoes were getting piled up and go. And I think that for, you know, I agree with the whole idea of that, you know, but I think it was just the cost that really had people going and and there was a lot of different things I won't, you know, get into. So it's, it is what it is. Councilwoman, any comments? The plan that Keith kind of gave up on halfway through.
Yeah, yeah. Less than 250 sounded really great. 250 lesser great. Maybe, and especially since there's other grants available to people to do it. Perhaps we would focus more on things where we don't have grants available for us to do things. That's it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Mars.
Yeah, I know we've had some discussions regarding helping us being, I've been sensitive to the, our transition policy when we have uh, new sewer mains going through and how we're going to affect and transition property owners onto that. You know, flipping a switch and having them suddenly, you know, having to get on immediately and spend 20 grand uh, or more um, to get their house uh, online there, um, is certainly unacceptable to a lot of people in town. I'm certainly not in favor of that. Um, sensitive to transitioning policy though, um, structure the costs to be more affordable. Uh, I'm not saying that this would be akin to paying student debt. Connecting to, to, to a town sewer and uh, if town water, if it's even, but makes for a more desirable dwelling. So, you know, as a property owner, you know, if we're able to structure payment for them uh, over a period of years, I mean, I would certainly be open to that. You know, I'm not sure how in favor I would be to um, providing a, a fund to help pay off um, some student debt here. But um, transitioning in those areas with those costs is something that's going to be important and it comes back, some of that comes back to what Larry brings up, having enough people online too. So there's a balance there, you know, so that things work right. I mean, I would disagree that everybody getting online at once, it would be necessary. Um, we would need to be uh, sensitive to those who couldn't afford um, and try to structure this in a way that uh, makes it affordable over the long run, but um, that, that's a nice investment in their property. It makes it more desirable. Herb appeal, the salability of it all, um, you know, plays into the uh, the private owner's hands there. Um, so.
Thank you.
We've had this discussion in pieces before, and I'll just restate a couple of points that I've made. I support when a public entity goes about constructing a new public sewer, typically they are anticipating all of the dwellings that would be served by that public sewer connecting to the public sewer. It has to be designed to convey that. When that doesn't happen, there are problems in uh, solid step positions in the lines because there's not enough flow to clean it. So there's sort of a double whammy here of number one, having continued service provided by septic tanks with its associated potential uh, discharges into the Chesapeake Bay coupled with then increased maintenance associated with the public sewers because we don't have sufficient flows to keep them clean. So in my past life, whenever we worked on extending a public sewer, it was required for the owners to connect to it in a reasonable amount of time. Otherwise, if we didn't have the support of the owners to connect to it, the town didn't construct the sewer. So it's sort of six, one and a half dozen together. So I, I would support uh, helping homeowners connect. Uh, a point was made up just a moment ago that I wanted to restate that also from a property value point of view, being on a public sewer increases the value of the property. Because a lot of people, when they're looking to buy a house, don't want to have to mess with uh, maintaining septic tanks. Particularly in this day and age when the requirements for maintaining septic tanks have increased dramatically over uh, say 10 or 15 years ago, when really all you had to do is pump the darn thing out every once in a while. There are much higher degrees of maintenance in operation than required nowadays. So I think this is a good program. Thank you.
I would, um, you know, I think we, we, we've covered it pretty well, except for one, one point I would like to make is I don't see that it has to be all or nothing. So if there's more, if there's a larger number of homes, then maybe we originally considered an incentive greater than zero still might nudge people in a particular direction. In fact, in some ways it might, it might, you know, really push people who are on the fence and you tell them it's time limited. Hey, get off the dime and get yourselves, um, you know, get yourselves connected. This is the opportunity to do it. So um, I see that as a, as a real positive. We, we can control the budget on that.
I'd add before I pass it on to woman who was, I was in property, read all the stuff that we, we read. And the, 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 at the time, and it, it still stands that it was, it was about getting EPA involved to finance all the underground stuff to go from say B school all the way back and then H street that way in the woods and there. It was about, it was about getting somebody to pay for all this. Before you even talk about, you know, subsidizing somebody's, you know, from going from a septic tank to the public sewer. So this is a, um, I'm not sure this is an opportune time for this because I mean, if, if it had an impetus right now and we were moving forward, it'd probably still be 10 years away. That's what I got. And the people went, well, it's a public meeting. I won't use. They weren't very unhappy. I mean, they weren't very happy. Anyhow, Councilwoman.
Yeah, I think Pat laid it out pretty well. I also think that he made a really good point that timing is an issue here and the amount of time it would take to get the infrastructure, our infrastructure up the streets is probably beyond the, these funds, you know, just in timing, um, potentially. I mean, do we really want a project that's going to be 10 years out? I don't know. Um, I I understand the arguments that have been made, but what I will say is that every property owner that is still in one of our developments that still has a mortgage and is still paying off their capital connection fees would be furious. Absolutely furious with us. And um, I'll leave it at that.
Yeah. And I think to, to Larry's point.
It's unfair.
We get nowhere near a hundred percent.
On a good day.
If that, okay. Anyhow, um, next, we're broadband connectivity. Keith, do you want to?
Sure. So just like water and sewer, it's, it's a necessity pretty much to have internet connectivity in today's world. And so to me, it seemed important, you know, that everybody in town had affordable, preferably, you know, high speed broadband options for all residents. I don't have a good price point. I don't, I, I did some preliminary research on how many people may not have it in Chesapeake Beach, and it seemed like fewer than 5% of people, if I remember correctly. But that's kind of where I was. I don't know what the plan would be on how to make that happen. So this was really just, uh, you know, had an hour left to get my ideas in there. So I put it in there um, as one that I thought might be worth exploring. So anyway, with that.
And thank you. And your turn. And before I go to uh, Councilwoman Bodan, I did read recently that the state got some money from the governor dedicated, you know, to this, and it's going to trickle down to the counties. And, and my first thought at, at the time without my editor's input yet was that would be the time to jump right on this project and to, you know, partner with the county to make sure we get some of that county money and county brings in and, and we'll make that happen, you know, their largest municipality. So I'll just say that and I'll go to.
Yeah, my, my concern here would be that it's an ongoing year on year expense, um, you know, beyond these funds. Again, a pilot project might work based on a income level sort of floor. I know that during COVID, like the amount of opportunities and programs that were available, if you were a student at certain income levels to get free wireless occurred everywhere. There were many opportunities. Of course, it doesn't help if you don't have a student, you know, um, but I'd be good if like with the opioid, if there was a specific or like coastal resiliency, if there was a specific. So if it was like an opportunity to help lower income individuals that don't have internet connection or broadband, that would be, you know, something to look at, almost like the co-pays, you know, like a specific program. I like the idea of us being a completely wired town. And however that happens, I am supportive of that. I do worry about um, year on year expenses though, with um, non-reoccurring funds.
Yeah, and I, I was going to jump in and just, you know, I, I had asked to, to keep this on uh, the list and um, you know, I think there's a lot of different forms this could take. So I'm not, I'm not going to take a lot of time with this. I, I would just tell you that um, I think there are several opportunities here, uh, and possibly the state and or technology will, will come first or will preempt uh, anything we could do with the timing of this. But much like sustainability, it's ridiculous that we live as close as we do to major cities and we have one choice for high speed internet. That's not a town of Chesapeake Beach problem, but it would be wonderful if the town of Chesapeake Beach took the lead in solving that problem if it were possible, very similar to the kind of arguments uh, folks made about sustainability planning. So um, probably not going to, I mean, you look at this list and you hear people talk, it's probably not going to get on the priority list. But boy, I would love to pursue this possibly outside of this uh, funding mechanism if possible. Thank you.
Uh, we, a small group of us looked at this a while back on increasing broadband and, and sort of, and actually did it in conjunction with North Beach. And we're trying to find a way to, I'll say, aware us, our vendor, to increase the broadband service here in the twin beaches. Um, so far, nothing. I guess my question with this particular item is, this is for ARP funding. What, what would we be using the ARP money for on this particular item?
Oh, oh, go ahead.
I don't know that you need to be filling the spot on that.
My understanding is this was town money, that we've already decided how we're using the ARP funding. So.
That's, that's a done deal. We, we, to make the paperwork process easier, okay, we can, and I won't explain this, so I'll, you know what, I'm not a treasure. Freddie, you want to explain it?
Sure. Um, in summary, we elected to reimburse ourselves for costs that we've already incurred that qualified under the ARPA funds um, for revenue loss.
Right. I, I recall that now. Thank you.
So these, these funds are just how we're going to use cost savings.
The offset.
In lieu of the expenses that we would have paid.
Thank you for refreshing my memory on that.
But to Larry's point, you know, uh, it's, it's my goal to spend every dollar of this basically on stuff that ARPA recommends. I mean, I know people have gotten slammed across the country for trying to do things like paying off through debt or there. They went, no, 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 no. So I think we owe it in, in, in the spirit of things to, you know, do that.
Right. But again, I'll, I'll just restate my question, even given that we're now using town funds that were offset by ARP money coming in. What would we do with the town funds to try to make this happen? It, it's not under our control.
That's what you're trying to say.
Yeah, yeah. It's not under our control.
If it's anything I passed that I had a thought when we were talking, I talked to a friend the other day that lives, they, I mean, we're talking million dollar homes outside of Annapolis. And I said, what's going on? She said, I don't get the internet here. So it's not just, you know, while the state and they were talking about rural areas and people, it's, it is what it is, as they say, you know? And it's, it's not limited to any sort of an income. Actually, I feel I'm pretty lucky. I, I do, I do great here. I really do. I mean, I have my home.
I feel like I'm on the other side from you on all these, and I feel bad. I mean, I.
Would you like to change your seat to?
I appreciate, I, well, I appreciate Keith bringing these things to the table because they're important discussions to have. What, are we talking about subsidies again, or are we in kind of encouraging competition and alternative technologies? Again, uh, the technologies are coming fast. Um, down at the, the nice bridge, I know we've got Starlink down there. Starlink, they're, they, they're continuing to put more satellites in, in the sky and there's better, uh, better uh, coverage every day for that stuff. And, and there's no Comcast, there's no cable or nothing. That's a little pricey right now. But uh, you know, those costs are going to come down. Um, the service is going to get a lot better. You know, one day we're going to have options here and, and we may have some options now. You know, with the, the advent of Starlink and it, it coming onboard. You know, and these, that these technologies eventually are going to, you know, the quality of them are, they're going to eclipse fiber optic. This all, this stuff's going to be wireless and it's going to be uh, you know, it's maybe a little bit like your satellite dish on your roof and getting reception. But I think that's, well, Starlink in particular is working on, on solving some of that. But you know, maybe town halls should look into, you know, Starlink at some point. Maybe a little cost prohibitive right now, but uh, those things are coming down. And I, I don't like only having Comcast. They feel like they don't need to answer any questions. They feel like they're just, it's all theirs. And I think the county's negotiating something uh, with them right now. But uh, But, you know, I have faith in technology and this internet stuff, it's going to get easier for us all. And I think one thing that was exposed recently with the lack of internet availability through, you know, wide-open areas, through the wet, through the Midwest and things, Starlink, that, that was one of the things that, that, how Starlink was born. And I think if you do some research, that they're, they're a little bigger player there in that, that market now than we think. But just thoughts, thank you.
Thank you, sir. And last but not least, Councilwoman Hartman.
Well, actually, it's the least because I have nothing to add to what my council members have said. Thank you.
Been colleagues of that, okay, very good. But don't go anywhere. Next project, it, it, it's, it's under walkability, but I actually, from my perspective, also think it's a public safety kind of of a thing. And I have to tell you, it's, it's one of those things that for many, many years, I'd drive by there and I would think, why isn't there a sidewalk there? You know, it, it's just, I, I would, and I, I walked a couple of times, and I think we walked at once, maybe Larry was with me, with Gretchen from the state, you know, and it's, you know, it's like, why wasn't there a sidewalk here? You know, how, how did that, who overlooked this? You know, that's sort of of, of a thing. And before I go to Peggy, I, I just want to say that, you know, in my perfect world, when we, when we end this, you know, you know, act here, when we, when we end spending our money, figure out what we, we want to do. Okay, you know, clearly, I feel, and I think the council for the most part agrees that, you know, it's a unique opportunity for us to address infrastructure, all different kinds of infrastructure that we spoke of, okay? However, I also think it would be nice, if you will, I hate to say Pat's perfect world, you know, that we would do little things like, you know, this for walkability. We had a request from the Green Team. You know, just something, you, you know, of, of Kellam's Field. I, I, I mean, it would be nice if we told the, you know, we, we can able, and, and we will one day, you know, show the citizens what we, you know, spent it on in a PowerPoint presentation and the whole bit that we, you know, we, flopped all this money into infrastructure and everybody, it's, it's like budget. People were like, boring, but obviously it's needed. But we could also, in that package, say, but we also did some, you know, nice little things for the town over here, be it, you know, Green Team stuff or walkability stuff or, you know, that sort of a thing, just kind of round it off. That's like going, hey, you know, we saw a problem with the infrastructure on such and such, and we just dumped 6 million into it, you know. If it was 6 million well-spent, I, I, I could sleep at night. But I'm just saying it would be nice if we sort of, you know, spread it around a bit. And I do think that's what, you know, cities are doing. So having said that, you know, and since for like 30 years I've been, been driving by there going, who forgot to do that? Peggy, I guess I support it, huh?
Thank you.
Just tell me I've been thinking crazy stuff for 30 years.
Very much. So this is the, what we've talked about in walkability, a walking space between where the sidewalk ends at Seagate and where it begins around New Horizons. And for those who are going to ask about money, I think we had already thought that, that Step One feasibility study would be about 60,000. So that's what the, the money here would be, is something like 60,000 for that. And it's really to start to look at how we can put a land in there. Because even though it looks like you just put a sidewalk there, it floods, it's right next to water. There's all kinds of 15 different state and federal agencies interested in anything you do next to that water. So it would be a complicated little study.
May I add one thing to that?
Go ahead.
So we, and Holly, tell me if I got this wrong. We applied for state highway money for the feasibility study. They were very much in support of the project. The will is there, but they passed our request up for other more, what they felt were other more pressing topics. So somehow jump-starting the feasibility study, you know, th, th, this note says grant-eligible, but really, we're a whole year away from having funding if we don't get on this ourselves.
I'll stay on this side, so I'll begin with you, Councilwoman.
Okay, so what, what this item's asking for is the 60,000 for Step One feasibility study, right?
Right.
So not the funding for the actual project itself, no grant matching or anything like that, it's just 60,000.
No, no, we first have to figure out what it's going to cost, so we can't even get as far as Step Two yet.
Of course, okay, so, and we would need the, this feasibility, feasibility study specifically for the grant funding, right? I mean, you know, for future steps.
Correct.
Okay, totally supportive, yeah.
Do you want to talk again?
No.
Larry?
We've talked about this project for a while, and in fact, I've, I think I was one of the people who initially came up with the idea of doing this and came to call it the Jaworski Memorial Walkway.
Might want to drop that in the future, by the way.
So I, I very much support this. I know there's going to be a lot of issues in dealing with this, given state agencies, given that most of that marshland right there is technically private property owned by the owner of Horizons on the Bay. I thought of a couple of things, you know, one way that we could maybe cut at least one state agency out of it would be to build the walkway a little bit further out in the marsh, so we don't have to at least mess with SAT. But we'd still be dealing with DNR and MB.
It'll be underwater.
And a bunch of other, yeah. So yes, I, I support it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Morris.
I'm going to elaborate a little bit here. I'm, I'm strongly in support of this, of this. I know that the Walkability Committee has done a lot of great work over the past years here, and there's a long list of, of meritable connectors that was born from that work. If this is the one that we're saying is, is up, way up at the top, I'm, I'm in full support of that. Frankly, I think it should be in design right now. We, some of those connectors really, we should have shelf-ready plans. So when we do have funds or we're going for grants, that we're able to maneuver a little better there. You know, given the, the ARP funds here, you know, not opposed to funding this entirely through that. That's, that seems like a pretty vital connection there to get that sidewalk in there. I know there's other meritable connectors that we should be looking at. Some are easy, low-hanging fruit, but, you know, getting some of these things, you know, and planned on, on a shelf is important.
Thank you. Councilman Parton?
Yeah, no, I think it's a good idea. I think we need a sidewalk there, so I don't have any.
Good, and we're, we're plowing through this pretty good, but I, I will remind the council that we have a lot of work left, including a, a closed session. So Charlie, you want to give a little overview of, of this project next?
Keith, are you, would you prefer to give this for Kellams or are you comfortable with me? I mean, it's not, it doesn't need to.
You said Keith.
I'm sorry, I meant Greg. Okay, so right now, we have an opportunity, you know, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to take a piece of, a, a piece of public land and totally reimagine it. And all preconceived ideas off the table, just say, wow, what, what could we do with this land? The Walkability Committee has worked in the past with RK&amp;K, who does quite a bit of creative work, thinking outside the box, showing examples. The town has done a study. If we choose to work off the study that was done, I'm, I'm okay with that. But I would love to see us pay someone like RK&amp;K to do something totally as an outsider and reimagine and just throw out a, a, a remarkable concept as to what we could do with that public space.
That's great, and I, I'm going to go to, to Councilman Hartman, but, you know, once again, I'm, I'm just going to lead off by saying, what I'm, I'm seeing some of here that I actually like is, is the fact that we're proposing, you know, a study. You know, let's, let's, you know, I mean, why not? It's a study, it's not that much of a cost when you compare it to the total, you know, ARP funds. But it is a, a way to get something going. Let's, let's get a study, see where we are so we can start, start planning for it. So I, I can't imagine that, since these are all great ideas, any, anyone that is a study. I mean, that's not really asking for a whole lot, so let's, you know, I like it. So, Councilman Parton, would you like to begin? You, oh, I got me, whose project got most? Well, you know, like I said, we got a lot to plow through, guys. It's only going to get worse.
Um, yeah, stop for coffee. So this is, we would try to do, we have a plan that, from Wayne's walkthrough for this, and this would be another one. I have to say, though, it's fascinating to think of trying to put out a new picture and what could come if we didn't have anything there. If we were going to spend money on Kellams, I'd rather see us start to enact the plan that we've seen, which should have had a lot of new elements and a number of changes, although not, of course, brand new. But I'd rather spend some money to put in the pickleball court or, you know, the tot lot finish it than to look again and say, well, what else could we do? Because I, I do think we hit up most of the elements that people have asked for in that plan. But that would just be my input to it, thanks.
Councilman Parton?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I was trying to understand the difference between what we've already developed in this. And so it's a reimagining and a new, and a new, you know, maybe a new outlook, maybe a new idea. Do, do, what would be the cost, do you think, of this to develop a, to have our?
Yeah, I think, I think we would have some control over that. Holly, help me remember, the, the Walkability Master Plan, we paid about 60 grand for it, does that sound right? About 70? And this would be less comprehensive than that, so let's make up a number and call it less than half of that. But the end product, the deliverable, would be something similar.
All right, thanks.
Councilman Morris?
Um, yeah, I, I see this as being a 1A. And then the last item, kind of the 1B to it. The 1B is kind of the execution. I think we're kind of in the throes right now of kind of getting stuff out in the middle of the table here, trying to figure out how it can be used and, and, and improved. So looking forward to progress on that.
Thanks.
I'll agree with Councilmember Morris, I was a little bit puzzled by what difference there is between this item and the last item, and the investment in Kellams emphasizes outdoor activity. Clarify any of that?
I, I don't think I put the last one on here. Again, I, I think that might have been Greg and Mike, I could be wrong about that. We, we kicked around a number of ideas.
We can, we could take them one at a time, I don't, I think you could ask.
I'm just asking.
So I would say, just my understanding here, that the idea of doing a complete feasibility study would help us understand the best way or creative ways to invest in outdoor activity in Kellams. Because we don't know, the, 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 this last item here, to me, strikes me as more specific. We're talking about, we're going to build this track over here and these pickleball courts over there. What the feasibility plan is, hey, what are the things we could do with this space? So we would come ahead of.
Sort of where I'm going with it, it would seem like this item should precede that final item.
I think we've all agreed with that, I think Greg kind of said that.
But we shouldn't have two items on here.
This is a work session.
Okay.
That's my. Okay, okay, good. Sir? I have nothing to add.
I really don't have anything to add, although I would, I know there were some specifics, recommendations, I think. Somewhere, well, I know somewhere in the comprehensive plan, I can't remember where. So if a study is done, again, I'd like to make sure that they're, they're cohesive with what the comprehensive plan had also, and the walkability, and the Kellams Field Committee, you know, make sure that everyone's talking to everyone else. I, I think it would be nice if we could check off some things in the comprehensive plan as we go along, saying we're working towards this, we're working towards that. And I think this would meet that goal. So I'm, I'm fine if we want another study, but I thought we had a plan in place. So, or at least a, a concept. You know, neither here nor there, you know, if we feel like we need another study, fine.
Okay, we're going to talk about the next item in exec, in closed session. So the, the last item, okay, investment in Kellams to emphasize outdoor activity, community event center. Greg, you want to share what some of your ideas were?
Well, I'm not certainly any of these ideas, not mine. I, the, we kind of started with the Kellams Committee about a year ago and trying to determine some guiding principles. But since then, you know, Wayne has done some work on a kind of a draft, how we can make use of the space. We've had some scuttlebutt, the committee's had a little bit of scuttlebutt, looking to advance, you know, that conversation with the public, of course, some decisions to make, like we were with ball fields and things like that. I do want to underscore though, that in the comprehensive plan, it, there's a lack of green open space in town. And that they hold up Richfield Station's fields there as, you know, hey, this is a win for the town, and it is. It's, it, but it's private, though, that, that's not, you know. So emphasizing and embellishing the, the green areas that we do have certainly should be high on our priority list. So I'm looking forward to future discussions regarding space.
Yeah, I, I kind of in, in, interpret it, what you're saying here is sort of, you know, that I agree with. It's sort of like what I was saying earlier in terms of, you know, you know, we, we talked about all the needs of infrastructure, nobody's denying that, but we do have a wonderful place back here called Kellams Field, and we do have an opportunity to do things there. Specifically what? I'm not sure right now, but we certainly, when you had this opportunity with, with this money, let's not ignore Kellams Field. I think that's kind of, that's how I took that. So Peggy, you want to, any comments on the let's not ignore Kellams Field?
No, I have no, nothing further to add to that one, thank you.
Thanks.
No comments, thanks.
That, good.
I'm just going to jump on this form, very, very briefly to emphasize this. If you, if you look at, if you look at the plans that, that Wayne drew up, and, and, and they're, they're, they're great. And we, we may want to absolutely use those plans as the starting point for, for starting to, to spend money on building trails and so on. If you look at some parks in neighboring communities in Annapolis, out in Dunkirk, the new park that they just built, sort of on the way to Dunkirk. They're doing other creative things besides what everyone thinks of Kellams Field is right now, which is a football field. I'm not suggesting we, we eliminate that by any stretch, but, but boy, I'd love to see, love to see what other people are doing and try to bring that into, into that space, so people don't think, oh, I don't, I don't, I don't play football and I have no reason to go to Kellams Field.
Councilwoman?
Um, I look, I just look forward to this project continuing to move forward and look forward to the day when we can actually vote on something specific. Other than that, I, I do question one-third of the funds that we have going to one project, you know, one area. I do question that a little bit. I'd like to see it maybe spread out amongst more. So I do question the cost, and that would be my only trepidation on this one, at least the estimated cost. I think one-third might be a bit much.
Thank you. So number three, the item here, well, yeah, if you guys can, Holly wants you to center the form with the rankings.
Yes, if you want to just leave it with me, that would be great.
We'll compile something and we'll.
That's fine.
We'll take another stab at this at a future work session.
Can I ask you a question? Do we get to hear the executive session because we won't be able to rank the one that's going to be an executive session?
Well, you can head it in.
Okay.
We are going to talk about one project in executive session. But yeah, okay, and, and you'll get some, a compilation of what we discussed, and we'll take another stab at this at a future work session. Okay, sir?
Clarify on the rankings, the rating on the scale, one of them being, or 10 being the most important, 13 projects here.
No, I don't think you meant that, I, I don't think that's what it means. I think, I mean, you could have, you could have 10. You could have 10, 10, 10, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I just took it that way.
One more question, if I may?
Yeah.
So I was wondering if we could just have a shared worksheet on there, that we could just do it electronically, rather than turn this in?
Absolutely.
So I have my notes, yeah, thanks.
Thanks, okay. Richfield Station Water Tower Pump. Holly, you want to lead?
Yes, sure, thank you, Mayor. So we have an emergency expenditure for a water tower pump at Richfield Station. I've provided some supplemental information that Jay has put forward from AC Schultz, which would give us, the worst-case scenario being $55,000. We do expect the repair to cost around $35,000, but the plan would be to bring forward this for a vote in, in our upcoming town meeting.
But the plan would be to bring forward this for a vote in, in our upcoming town meeting.
If you have any questions, I'll start with Councilwoman Hartman.
Is this, do you have already something to do it, or is this an RFP thing?
I have the contractor that built the well coming out to do it. Pretty much their only game on the East Coast here that's, so they're going to pull the pump. The variables are when they get it out of the ground, we're going to do one last test. And, but I've priced it down for like worst case scenario. And just, just for informational purposes, this, this pump failed at the same time we had the peril failure that, that caused the water park.
Coincidence.
Well, we've, we, Holly and I have contacted BG&E directly. We're asking for some information on surges and different things. It blew three of my fuses at the tower, which I haven't happened. But there's no smoking gun to directly say that that was the cause, could be coincidental. But we will know a lot more when we get the pump, which is 690 foot in the ground, out to physically look at it.
Well, that means it'll be faster, since you know who's going to do it. Thank you.
Sure.
Councilwoman?
Yeah, no questions?
Councilwoman?
It's a deep, that's a deep, well, I don't have any questions. Thanks.
Councilwoman?
No questions.
Councilwoman Fink?
Yeah, nothing further from me.
Nothing further.
Okay, very good. Public Works multi-purpose vehicle purchase.
Sure, thank you. So the town council budgeted $80,000 for this fiscal year for a multi-purpose vehicle for Public Works. We have a change to that vehicle that is going to increase the cost unexpectedly. In, in our memo, we have that we expect the cost to be $135,000. However, the supplemental information you have before you from John Deere would bring that cost to just under $105,000. So the change would be for safety reasons. We need to have a piece of equipment that can hold a trench box. So this would come out of the general fund capital improvement line item. And we would ask that we move forward. We're not going to seek a budget amendment at this time, since we believe we have enough funds in the capital improvement line item to cover the extra.
Any questions from the council?
Yeah. Let's go back to the finances for a second. So when we did the budget, we expected certain things to be in the capital project line item area. And so if we were to agree with this, are we foregoing any of those planned capital projects?
No.
So we budgeted extra money into the capital projects or where did?
So there, on occasion, will be savings in certain line items. So, so for example, within Public Works, they budgeted a certain amount for garage repairs. That project was adjusted and there were some savings there. So it, it ends up balancing out in that there's not the expectation that we would not complete a project. However, the savings from another line item would be used.
Within the capital projects line item area? So we're not foregoing anything?
We're not.
All right, and this, this just, is, is this the same vehicle that we just talked about and just increased the amount, or is this a different one, correct?
Different.
Different, okay. I have no further questions.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood the numbers. Can you tell me what the original budget number was?
We budgeted 80,000, just within the capital improvements line item. So our capital improvements line item is about 1.5 million. So within that, we, we itemize certain projects, but it's, it's not in a line item of a budget.
I misunderstood. I thought you said it was 135. So we budgeted 80 and it's one, it's going to come in around 105 instead.
We believe, yes, 105.
And Jay needs it?
Yes, it is 100% safety is, is the change, to be able to hold a trench box.
I mean, what, what, what else is there to say?
Councilwoman?
I agree with Councilwoman Fink.
Thank you. Definitely support. I was just wondering, um, just adding a backhoe attachment to this, what's the difference?
It's so, we were looking at the 310 and we have to get the 410. And, and basically this last water main break we had in Sandsbury, the line was seven foot down. So it's not just the power of the machine, it's the reach. And to do, if we find one more than five foot, we're going to have to trench box it. And the, the original equipment I, uh, budgeted would, would have done it. But now that we're finding this line, I'm suspect as we go down Sandsbury, we're going to run into this again. Because I even opted out, if we rent one once a year, different things where you can't get them. So we're just going to buy one. It's a little bigger than the one I budgeted. It's about 20 grand more.
The town in a trench box?
Nope, we're going to buy a trench box too.
Going to buy trench boxes to save lives.
We have panels, but we don't have the box. So we're going to have to buy a trench box. And looking forward at the trench box, I realize not only are we going to need the reach, but we're going to need the weight capacity of the machine that we're going to buy.
Sure, thank you.
Sure.
Councilwoman?
Thank you. That was, answered my question. So just wanted to understand more. No additional.
Thank you.
If you can find one, buy it before somebody else does.
Yeah, that's the other thing. They're about four to six months out, but we're, we're going to start that process. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Mayor, quick follow up, if I may? Two, I actually had two questions about that. One is, would you also use this if you do proactive fix of the saddles like we were discussing earlier?
There, there's, this is described in perfect way, a multi-purpose vehicle. This works at our shop, smashes the dumpster, loads salt, there's, unloads product at our shop. It's, um, a lot of things we do with it.
And, okay, and then one other thing is, I'm just kind of curious, does this require a different level of license to operate?
It, it doesn't require a different one. There's licenses we've got to have for heavy equipment operators. The one that we're trading in was from 1994. So we have one that, that's just become un-cost effective to keep repairing. It's push salt. So it doesn't require an additional, but yes, you have to take a training to run heavy equipment.
So our staff, who are trained on the 1994 edition, will be able to operate. There's no additional costs or additional resources for this newer model?
Correct, but we will be training new staff members, which we get to be certified. But it wouldn't matter the model, it's a, it's a, not specific to this piece of equipment.
Okay, um, Route 260 replacement clock.
Thank you. So our clock on Route 260, as Councilman Jaworski pointed out in our last meeting, is not working. It costs about the same to repair the clock as it would to replace the clock. So we've provided some additional information as well. The memo, when we originally drafted this, we thought it was going to be about $20,000. However, we are now under the understanding it would be closer to $16,000 to replace the clock. So we've provided that additional information. And Jay, you're waiting on one more estimate, I think?
Correct, and I'll, I'll have that to the council before. So we have two different brand clocks. If you know the four face clocks that's at Mears, I've dealt with them. We were able to self maintenance, can, can change componentry on our own. They mail it to us. I've changed out three of the four faces and different things. The Vernon clock that's on 260 is inferior in my mind, but I wanted to price what we had. So I'm looking at getting this one. It's also on an atomic timer, so every time the power goes out, we don't have to go out there and change it. But I'll have that, uh, price in Holly before we, you know, it'll be in the next pack and we'll have a recommendation.
Councilwoman, any questions?
Uh, yeah. First of all, I'm, I'm supportive of this, I think, a new clock as opposed to replacement. And I do have one question, though. And the repairs needed to the clock, number two on the paper that we got, it says the access opening at the bottom of the post would have to be enlarged and a new access door provided. When we talk about increasing impervious surfaces, how much larger are you talking about? Minimal, like a foot around more, like?
It, it's actually on the physical structure itself. In the bottom of that base, there's a little tiny panel. It's, it's not on the poured cement. It's actually in the base of the clock. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so you're not talking about increasing the amount of cement there. You're talking about using, utilizing what is currently there as impervious surface, increasing the base for the clock itself? Okay. And would the clock itself and this be of the same basic size, structure and all that? You know, like height and, you know, same sort of?
Yeah, they, they sent a few pictures and we'll have those, but it's going to, it's going to mimic what's out there almost to the T. The one thing that we couldn't get that I'm going to change that's there is the eagle. That's on top of it. We're going to mount it ourselves to the new one.
Holly supportive, sounds great. Thank you.
Councilwoman Fink?
At the risk of a bloodbath, quoting an earlier term, has anyone considered the notion of not replacing the clock?
I have.
Perhaps even putting something artistic there?
They did today, in fact.
Sign, something with a light, but not necessarily a clock. Like just throw it out? I'm, I'm not saying I support it, just curious if anyone else thought about it?
No. No one else thought about it?
Yeah.
I, I was going to make the same suggestion about the eagle, as I'm sure your guys can mount that eagle on the top of whatever we do.
Correct.
And then just one other suggestion to consider is possibly look into putting a solar panel there? Power it by solar?
I can look at that. I can. It would include a backup battery, some different things, but I can definitely ask them.
Yeah. I mean, we might have to have both hardwired and solar. It's solar might not be enough to drive all the time.
It would have to be both, but it could back it up in an outage.
Yeah.
I will follow up on that.
Thank you. Before I go to Councilwoman Morris, I will say, if it helps, Councilwoman Fink, I, I lived here when that clock went in and I remember how many, how many people loved it. I heard a lot of that, boy, that's great. It's, this is great to see it when people come down to visit. I say, go to our, our beautiful clock and take it right or left or whatever. So, you know. Councilwoman Morris?
Well, I thought that was an interesting question that you bring up. You know, that, it's poking things from all the way around, given the mayor's comments there. Uh, it looks, sounds like we're looking at a new clock there and I'm in support of that. Sounds good. 10-4.
Councilman Partick?
Thank you.
No questions?
Councilwoman Hartman?
I hadn't thought of that, but I love that idea. A piece of sculpture at the beginning instead of a clock that nobody looks at? I think it'd be fabulous.
No clock?
No clock. Or maybe a sculpture clock that never changes time? Oh, no, that's what we have.
We got that now.
No, no, but really, I hadn't thought about it and I'm sure we're not going to, we're not going to change everything to look at sculpture now. But I think it would be brilliant to have a piece of sculpture there instead of a clock that, you know.
Well, if I may, Mayor, I thought about installing a giant sundial because it would always be right and I'd never have to adjust. There you go.
Thanks for sharing that. Okay, before we go into closed session, okay, we're going to, we'll do our council lightning round first. I'll start with you, Council, Council.
I just wanted to say that I very much appreciated the volunteer and staff party at the water park. I thought it was lovely. It was a really wonderful event. And for myself, I think the committee chairs and co-chairs, next year, maybe encourage your groups to come. I'm sorry that we didn't make a little round of our group, Charlie, and say, are you coming to the party? Come to the party. Because, you know, we didn't, we got the invitation. I said, oh, yeah, and didn't think to, like, encourage my group to come. I think it would have been great.
Well, and I'll, I'll interject again, when we were, it, it was so great seeing the, you know, volunteer groups sitting and talking to each other in an adult fashion, you know, with an adult beverage and a drink and being, you know, relaxed in a, a beautiful place. And, and we were debating down the end because we, we had a, a time limit and I asked Councilman Larry for his input on, on how to, how to, you know, like in other words, if we were going to cut the cake and make a speech, you know, and all that, usually when you do that, it's time to go. And I really didn't want to cut it off at 7:30 because that, that was it. And Larry made a great suggestion that, you know, no speech, which I was all for, and just cut the cake and give him a piece on the way out, you know? So we were able to extend that camaraderie for a good 30 extra minutes. And that's really what it was. It was really great to see these, these volunteers all, all get along and mix their different groups and stuff like that. So, yeah, hopefully we'll have a, a bigger crowd next year. Thank you.
Yeah, I second that. I thought it was a great time. But I just want to take a moment to remind folks about the International Overdose Awareness Day. And we're doing a glow vigil at the North Beach Boardwalk at 7:30 on Wednesday evening. And the mayor will be saying a few words there, as will several other people speaking on the topic. And then once the speakers are done, we'll be walking down to the park there for, for a kind of an artistic installation in memory of those lost to the overdose epidemic. And so I hope you all can join us. And, and if you need a, well, it's probably too late now. I was going to say, if you need a purple light bulb, talk to me, but we are out of them. So, thanks.
Thank you.
I just wanted to lend, uh, share my appreciation of the discussion regarding the ARPA funds. And to echo Councilwoman Bodine's comment about having a balanced approach to, to spending those funds is, is important. I, I think we're going to find, though, that some of these costs may not reach the estimated value that, that we're looking at. And then if they do, and I think that the concept plan for Callum's could be a good candidate for some phasing discussions too. There were some things that Wayne had, that I was really surprised on that first blush shot that he did of that. I was surprised we're on there. Just exciting things, things that, wow, you know, wow, we're going to have, thinking about, just thinking about having some of that stuff is exciting. But, you know, there are costs, costs to all of that. So I'm looking forward to having further discussions on Callum's. Thank you.
Three things, one reminder, I mentioned it earlier, Coastal Resiliency Steering Committee meeting this coming Thursday here in Town Hall at 6:00 PM. Open meeting, come on by. Another reminder, Taste of Beaches, September 13th?
17th.
17th? I'm planning ahead. September 17th at Callum's. Mayor Mahoney is responsible for the weather?
Again?
Again. So I've requested the weather like we had this past Saturday for the dragon boat race. So get on it. And then the last time I have is just an early happy birthday to the mayor.
Oh, thank you very much.
Coming up September 8th.
39 again. Thank you. Thank you.
Yield just a little bit of my time back to Councilman Partick. What day, what night are we supposed to light up our purple lights?
August 31st.
So it's Wednesday night, starting at sundown, and then that's it?
And then, September is recovery month, so you can keep turning them on all throughout September.
Okay, and, okay, that's good. Thank you.
October something too?
October is Domestic Abuse Awareness Month, and it's also purple. So if you want to keep it on through October.
If you're a Vikings fan, football season's coming up.
It will lose meaning. Been a long night. Good work, everyone. Stay civil.
I really have nothing. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I need a motion to close the regular meeting to go into closed session under statutory authority of Maryland Annotated Code pursuant to general provisions, Article 3-305B, subsection 7, to consult with legal counsel to obtain legal advice. We were going to, we're going to do it here.
So moved. So moved.